Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And at this time, would everyone rise for the invocation? And Pastor Bradley, would you please come forward and give us the invocation?
Lord, we're so thankful for this beautiful day that you've given us and the blessings that you give us each and every day. We thank you for the city of Bonita Springs and all who live here and work here. Lord, such a wonderful place to call home. Thank you for our mayor and city council and the work that they do. We pray you'll give them wisdom and courage as they conduct a meeting today. We thank you for our city staff and first responders and all who serve here in Bonita Springs and do such a fine job. Thank you for those who will be recognized this morning in city government. Lord, they deserve all the recognition that we could possibly give. Lord, as always, we pray for those who are serving in our armed forces, especially this time of the year as many will be separated from their family. Be with them in a special way and meet their needs and watch over them and their families. Thank you for this Christmas time of the year. We thank you for the decorations and the lights and the festivities, opportunities for family and friends to be together. And, Lord, special times to worship. And, Lord, I just pray that the love and joy and peace of the holiday season would fill our hearts and fill this room. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Councilman, could you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
It would be an honor, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slakton.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Simon.
Here.
Councilman Longheart.
Here.
Okay, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mayor.
All right, well done. Let's see, at this time, we'll have public comment on agenda items. Agenda items only, please. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward. Don't be bashful. That's all right, Kathy, it's all you. Let's go. See, five, four, three...
Hurry up!
Come on up!
Isn't there something about the DR GR today?
Oh, there'll be time for that.
Oh, that's later, that's why.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right.
I didn't jump up.
That's right, you're not holding up the meeting or anything.
Sorry.
Anyone else would like to approach the microphone and then back off? Ah!
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm staying here, I'm not backing off. Okay, well, my name is Patrick Banas. I'm a certified land use planner and a board member with the Bonita Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to speak on the DR GR issue. And before I get started, I just want to reiterate what I said at the last hearing. I do not represent any landowners in the DR GR. I'm here to present the chamber's position and my personal and professional opinions. First, the moratorium is bad for business. Rightly or wrongly, it's perceived as anti-growth and anti-business, and it's the wrong message at the wrong time. We've worked hand-in-hand, the chamber, the city, the EDC, in creating a pro-business climate in the city, and this is the wrong message to send. Secondly, your moratorium, the way it's written right now, is a de facto two-year moratorium. And let me explain that. It directs staff to not work. They're precluded from doing any work on the new future land use category and comp plan amendment. So that means you're going to go through a whole year of the task force discussing the issues, and they're going to come back to you with some recommendations at the end of that year. Staff is then going to take that information, and they're probably going to have to supplement the information, do some data analysis, even hire outside consultants to fill in the information gaps. They're going to have to put together the comp plan amendment application, the future land use category, vet that with the public, then go through transmittal hearings. After the transmittal hearings, it goes to DEO and state agencies comment. City has to address those comments, and only then can you go to adoption hearings. Easily a one-year process. I've been through it. I think a lot of people here understand that process, and it's very time-consuming. So, right now, that one-year moratorium is essentially a de facto two-year moratorium. Third, we all want to get the water right. The chamber is not advocating for any specific project or any kind of predetermined outcome. What we want, though, is we want resolution to this issue as soon as possible. And the way to get there is not through the moratorium. It's really through engaging all stakeholders, especially the landowners. If you're going to find solutions where you're going to create reservoirs or flowways or canals or put special measures for environmental purposes, you have to work with those landowners. Otherwise, you're looking at, what, taking their land? And I don't think anybody wants that. Fourth, the DR GR in itself cannot address all water issues in the city, and it's ludicrous to think so. And that responsibility should not be placed on the DR GR. It can certainly help. It can certainly alleviate things. But we can't go in thinking that the only way to make this right is if we address all water issues throughout the city. Fifth point is, from a fiscal standpoint, this is not a prudent position for the city. If you look at the moratorium in Lee County, they're now faced by multiple lawsuits from landowners and mining entities. Using tax dollars to fight lawsuits is not prudent fiscally. We can get there and get the same solution without having to go through a moratorium. So what we recommend is that you vote against the moratorium, that you direct your staff to work with the water task force, all stakeholders and the landowners, and develop a new future land use category and comp plan amendment that would be ready for transmittal within a one-year period, that they identify specific infrastructure project and also environmental measures, and that you give them the resources to do so, and that you respect that one-year timeframe. And I'd like to remind you of some of the comments that were made at the last hearing. There were several commitments that, within one year, this would be resolved...
I'm going to ask you to go ahead and wrap it up, and you can reserve the rest of your comments for when the ordinance is presented, if you'd like.
Just to remind you that there were some commitments that this would be resolved within a one-year time period, and that's what we expect and that's what we'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speaker at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed with the agenda. Let's see, we have a presentation for Bobby Hunter. Is that going to occur?
No, 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 no.
Or no? We're going to put that off? Hey, Bob.
Sheriff is sick.
Sheriff is sick. Oh, that's too bad. Anyway, we look forward to seeing that presentation. Bobby Hunter is an awesome person, great sheriff deputy. Let's see, Presentation of Ten Year Service Award for one of our city employees, excellent, Lisa Pace. Would you please come forward?
It's ice. It's ice. It's ice. Yeah, ice. It's ice.
Your accent needs some work.
It's South Carolina. No, it's an I.
Lisa Pace, would you please come up here? Now, y'all.
Y'all.
Yeah, I always have a little, I always keep track up there. When she comes up to speak, I'm always doing these little hash marks. Every time she says "y'all," I make a mark, and I'll have a whole page, a whole page of y'all's. I know you're all really interested in that. Anyway. Hello, dear. Lisa has just rescued this city in so many ways. She's done such a great job fiscally and financially for the city, and she's just a joy to work with as well. She is knowledgeable, personable, and, like I said, just a whole lot of fun for everyone in this community and this city. And thank you so much for what you do. And it's an honor to be able to give you this plaque, this gigantic plaque, for ten years of service, presented to Lisa Griggs-Pace. That was a rough accent. As of the 15th day of December 2013, in appreciation and recognition of your ten years of public service to the city and the residents of Bonita Springs, Florida, Lisa, thank you so much for everything you do. Please give her a great big hand.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you very much.
What we got?
We'll shake hands.
A presentation.
We don't have cooties or nothing.
We should. Go back and forth.
Okay, now we have the, oh, this is fun. Presentation of a certificate of appreciation. Let's see, now, presentation by Andy Hansen. On behalf of the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust and the Florida League of Cities, we are going to receive something, a very special Christmas present. Would you like to come on up there?
Sure.
I don't know why I walked back up. How you doing?
Good, good.
Here's the microphone.
Well, good morning. Again, I'm Andy Hansen, your local representative with the Florida League of Cities, representing the administrator for the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, which is the insurance company for the city of Bonita. And for six years in a row now, we've given back premium to our members, you being one. And this year, I brought a check for $25,547, which actually represents about 25% of the insurance premium the city paid for property insurance two years ago. Since we haven't had any catastrophic events since 2004 and '05, we have been able to return collective premium to our members.
Who does that?
Well, it's unheard of in the insurance industry, but the Florida League of Cities, being the largest insurer for municipalities, not only in Florida but in the United States, has been able to do that. So we're very pleased to do that for you and make the presentation, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Holy, holy.
Yeah. Sweet. Nice. Yes, sweet. Awesome.
Thank you very much.
It's an honor to work with you guys, and thank you so much for doing this. You've always treated us well. From the very beginning, since 2000, they've been with us. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, awesome.
Thank you, Andy.
Awesome.
All right, and at this...
Pause at that check. Would you pause at that?
Yeah, run that through your check machine. At this time, would Professor David Patrick James Green, would you come forward, please? See, I was expecting a guy with long gray hair and a beard.
Double the haircut.
It's grown inward.
An Einstein-ish looking, well, you'll be Einstein-ish looking. Anyway, how you doing?
Good, thank you, ma'am.
Good to see you. I better read this for you. All right, for his environmental education commitment to his students and the Bonita Nature Place, for utilizing the Bonita Nature Place as his outdoor classroom, for the many student projects benefiting the educational conservation goals of the Bonita Nature Place, and for his 2013 Engage Scholarship Faculty Award for engaging his students to enrich the communities through their service. David, thank you so much for everything you do out there, and thank you for introducing a whole new generation to the Bonita Nature Place. Everyone, please give Professor Green a good hand. Nice to talk to you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Thanks, David.
Awesome.
We're on E.
Okay. Now, we're going to receive the FGCO SBDC quarterly report.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
How are you doing this?
I'm well, thank you.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, citizens and staff of Bonita Springs, thank you for inviting me to report on the activity of the Small Business Development Center here in the Bonita Estero area. As you are aware, we're located in Cottage One in gorgeous Riverside Park downtown Bonita Springs. It has been my pleasure since April of this year to consult with more than 40 different individuals and groups about starting or growing their business. When I came to live in downtown Bonita a year ago tomorrow, I had no idea that my dream of contributing to a community in my retirement years would be fulfilled so soon. Of course, I also had no idea that my retirement years would occupy me almost full-time with other people's concern. I recall coming home one day in the middle of February this year after having visited with the dean, some faculty members, and my current boss at Lutkert College of Business and asking my wife, Roseanne, if you were to describe the perfect retirement job for me, how would you do that? Didn't take her long to verbalize the position that I currently hold. Upon starting the position, my boss, Dan Rugelski, impressed two things on me. Number one, he said, "Listen to your clients and provide whatever help you can do to meet their needs." And number two, work within the community because we can't do this job alone. And I've tried to do those two things, and I believe that I've attained some success. You have a folder in which you will find a sheet with statistics on my activity in these last eight months. What those numbers do not tell you, because I can't record it yet, is that we have three loan applications pending at banks for new business and turnaround situations. I hope to hear soon about our lenders' willingness to assist to the tune of just under half a million dollars. Of course, when business owners do that sort of thing, they need to invest their own equity as well so that the total will almost double. New investment will be just under a million dollars. Consulting with individuals about starting their business and about making changes to grow and improve requires the creation of a personal-professional relationship that is built on trust. That's not an easy task, as I'm sure you know from your own endeavors. Thus, it is amazing to me, if I look at the results objectively, how quickly we've been able to accomplish this task, and I credit the openness of the folks who want to make southwest Florida their economic home. With regard to our effort to cooperate for the benefit of the community, we have, from my perspective, a great relationship with your staff, the administration, from the city manager to the Director of Development Services, planning and zoning staff, have all been very supportive and cooperative and have been ready to respond to every request for assistance I have made. Our cooperation with the chamber, with local lenders, with business owners, and with SCORE has been beneficial to all. We are proud to continue to tell the world Cottage One is open for business. The SBDC provides one-on-one counseling at no cost to those who want our help. In addition to that, we sponsor educational sessions regularly. As you are aware, we held two seminars on doing business in Bonita, co-sponsored by you, the city, and co-presented by Ms. Arlene Hunter. As a direct result of those meetings, one business was created, a $25,000 startup investment was done, one new job now exists, and we expect the second one within the next three months. We are requesting in the consent agenda that you agree to co-sponsor two more of those sessions this year, we hope, one in April and one in November. In addition to those seminars, we held one on strategies to prepare for borrowing, one on innovative marketing approaches. This coming year, we will be doing one in January, and the flyer is out for it, on year-end accounting and record-keeping requirements for small business. We will be looking at the legal environment in February, and in March, we're going to review the business planning process. We'll create a panel of people who've actually done it this year with our help, and we will have them talk to our guests and invitees. All of those, we hope, to do at the Lyles Hotel. In addition to that, we've hosted a lenders' roundtable at which local bankers had an opportunity to discuss their views and ways of helping the community more. Your city was represented by the Director of Development Services, and we expect to have such a roundtable twice a year, the next one at the end of February. We do seminars on campus. The next one that we will be doing is on January 25. It's a business law school. We will have multiple tracks. We will have multiple attorneys, multiple topics. It is a good opportunity for all of us to pay a little attention to the environment that we work in. And then finally, I would like to ask a face for each of you, council members and city staff. As we get to know each other, and I hope develop trust in working together, it becomes, from my perspective, crucial that you feel free to ask the SBDC and me for specific involvement in the effort to build this community's economy. If you are aware of any situation, any time, any activity that we can contribute to, please contact me. Let me know, and we will do our best to find a way of saying, "Yes, let's do that." Your mayor was kind enough earlier this fall to give us just such an invitation, and I believe the organization that we responded to was happy with our activity. I'm beginning to get used to saying, "I'm at least in part from the government, and I am here to help." I look forward to continued cooperation in 2014. I wish you a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and this is the one I love saying, "I'll see you next year."
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Well done. Counsel, any questions?
Can you repeat, how much value, $500,000, what was the value for that you mentioned?
We have loan applications in for just under $500,000 for three businesses, one that exists and two new ones. And then what we're currently doing with those businesses is the owners thereof will be investing approximately the same amount, so the total is just under a million dollars.
If somebody went to somebody in the private sector to ask them to help to do what you do, how much would they typically pay an hour to get that kind of assistance?
Well, the only way I know how to answer that is I used to do this up in the Midwest, St. Louis area, and I used to charge $400 an hour for my...
Okay, and how much is the city paying you?
I believe that the city is providing almost free rent. I think you charge us $1 for the cottage.
That's us charging you, but we don't pay you anything, so we're getting this incredible value.
Paying me?
We're getting an incredible value for the small business people who we know are 78% of, you know, of business, and you're giving this very valuable advice for free.
And it's a ball.
Well, Merry Christmas. Isn't that fantastic?
I love it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rudy. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, let's see, we have, let's see, Item F, Adopt a Concurrent Approach, Project Prioritization. Carl.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call Matt Feeney, our Director of Public Works, to come to the microphone and introduce the topic, which is, of course, the Massive Landscaping Initiative that the city is undertaking this current year.
That's officially the name of it now, right?
That's what we're calling it, massive.
Massive landscaping initiative.
Yes. Well, the word "huge" is taken, so we're moving on to massive, okay?
I hate that "huge" got ruined like that. Anyway...
This got off track. Matt, it's Matt. Here's Matt.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Counsel.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce our landscape architect, Chris Busk, who we've been working with to develop an approach for the Massive Landscape Initiative.
Extraordinary.
Extraordinaire. No, basically, we've been working with Mr. Busk since council approved him as our landscape architect to come up with a strategy on how to approach the several projects that were identified, as well as any that may come out of landscape discussions within the city. So before you, in the green sheet and also in the presentation Mr. Busk will be providing in a minute, we looked at factors that would accelerate projects as well as maybe slow them down in terms of timing, just based on logistics. Some of those things that we identified were timing factors. They include existing FDOT right-of-way permits versus having to obtain new ones for areas such as I-75 interchange, right-of-way ownership and maintenance, as well as just new installation projects versus trying to augment one that preexists and marry the vegetation into what we already have, as well as existing irrigation systems, et cetera. So we took this approach. We also looked at the roadways to see what nature they served within the city and kind of broke them into two separate categories, one being arterial, which serves kind of through traffic as they come into the city, as well as local or community roads, which more so serve folks as they're traveling within our city boundaries. So we broke those out, and Mr. Busk kind of recommended an approach where we try to knock those projects down concurrently. It gives us some flexibility, but it, you know, we're dealing with roadways that serve pass-through traffic as well as local. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Busk to grant the presentation.
Come on up. I want to point out that I am very happy that the staff, as everybody has recommended you for this, that you're completely familiar with this community, and I can't think of a better, more conscientious person to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you.
And thank you for developing the MLI, or the Massive Landscaping Initiative.
Extraordinary Landscape Initiative.
I'm sorry, it's already done. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to thank you all for selecting us as the landscape architects, and we are landscape architects and contractors in Naples, and I do work in Bonita and Lee County. I've been working here for 30 years, and in my company, I have a number of people on staff that do a number of things. And the greatest thing about what we're able to help the city of Bonita with is that all the experience I've had in design and building landscapes and also maintaining them is what really makes the projects award-winning.
And Chris, you're very soft-spoken, which is awesome, but it's okay. I'm going to ask you to pull that up to you, and you're tall as well, so everybody wants to hear this.
Can you hear me now?
Go right ahead.
Oh, thank you, all right. All right. Well, first off, I want to congratulate the city for getting the downtown redevelopment approved yesterday. So that's a huge thing for Bonita and surrounding areas, and I think it really is the heart of Bonita, and it's so nice to kind of marry this with what the Massive Landscape roadway project is, and it really does come at a great time to have everything solved at the same time. Anyways, I was just mentioning a little bit about our company, and I've been a landscape architect for 30 years, and I have Nick Lehman that works with me, he's here today. He's going to be helping us with other staff members. We do have the entire supervisory staff that actually installed all the medians in Naples. They worked for Hannula, and they worked for me as well, the supervisor of installation and also the irrigation supervisor and the accounting person that did all that work for the last 12 years for Collier County. So I have a huge cachet of people to help us with this project, anything that the city might need. And project administration is one of the things that's really important as you design and build these projects. So I just wanted you to know that we have that on staff, and that was a big part of what we could do to help the city get from where we are today, do this massive landscape project and a finishing result. So we, I, since the city, I've lived here for 25 years and driven the roadways in Bonita and throughout Bonita, and we've had to move a few of the historic houses through some of those roadways, so I'm kind of familiar with how these roadways work. Of course, you know, I wasn't really part of your original meetings to get all this beautification going, but what really is noticeable to anybody that's new to Bonita is driving through 41 from where Collier County ends and the Foxtail Palms abruptly end and the median and the right-of-ways. And we've obviously selected 41 north from Collier County as far up as Coconut Point. I could have brought my pointer to make this a little bit more easy to read, but the red designates the arterial roads, US 41 and Bonita Beach Road and Imperial running from Collier County up to past...
There's a pointer on that.
what we could do to help the city get from where we are today, do this massive landscape project and a finishing result. So we, I, since the city, I've lived here for 25 years and driven the roadways in Benita and throughout Benita, and we've had to move a few of the historic houses through some of those roadways, so I'm kind of familiar with how these roadways work. Of course, you know, I wasn't really part of your original meetings to get all this beautification going, but what really is noticeable to anybody that's new to Benita is driving through 41 from where Collier County ends and the Foxtail Palms abruptly end, and the median and the rightaways. And we've obviously selected 41 north from Collier County as far up as Coconut Point. I could have brought my pointer to make this a little bit more easy to read, but the red designates the arterial roads, US 41 and Benita Beach Road and Imperial running from Collier County up to past...
There's a pointer on that.
Right. Okay, now I gotta figure out which button it is.
It's like a well-oiled machine around here.
Did have a pointer.
Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sure the landscaping is going to go in much more smoothly than this presentation, just so you know.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Well, we have the arterial roadways, of course, 41, can everybody hear me? 41 going from where Collier County ends all the way up across the bridge and up to Coconut Point. We do have Benita Beach Road going from the interchange, I-75 interchange, all the way to Hickory Boulevard, or the roadway along, I'm sorry, going all the way to the beach. It works double functions, I can tell. So we have the arterial roadways, and we'd like to work on everything at one time, but what's going to happen is there's different agencies. FDOT controls the 41 rightaways, so we have to, when we're designing this, we can do the medians because you already maintain the medians, but we also, we have to get the FDOT approval for the right-of-way areas along 41, and then turn over the maintenance to the city of Benita, because once you do the landscaping, you obviously want to follow through with the maintenance for all of that. Benita Beach Road from 41 to the interchange is relatively easy to manage as far as any permitting we need. The interchange is another thing. That's actually, we'd like to work with 41, the project of 41, Benita Beach Road and the interchange simultaneously, although we do have to work with DOT on some simple permitting things at the interchange. The city does currently maintain that, I understand. There is, from Collier County on Livingston going through Benita Beach Road north on Imperial, the city has improved those portions. Every time I do this, my mouth goes dry. So if we go from Collier County on Livingston going north, this portion here from Benita Beach Road through to Terry Street has just been landscaped, and we're looking at that whole roadway, actually, we're going to be working south of Benita Beach Road from Benita Beach Road to the Collier County line. That's just some relatively, well, landscapes that are going to give texture and color. The problem with so many of the medians as they are today is there's just very little canopy along 41, as you'll notice, and there's, except for the landscaping that's been provided by the business owners per county permits, there's really no scheme going on at all from 41 all the way through, all the way up to Coconut Point. And the same thing happens when you obviously get off the interchange at I-75 going all the way. There's landscaping, it was just not really coordinated because it's been done all at different times, and now you've got the expansion of Benita Beach Road that just had finished, I believe, just last year. All that area is now available, and it is ready for landscaping. Most of these landscape projects, they go through a series of the design and then our review with your Road Bureau Tree Committee and the city, and then we go through bidding, and then we go through construction. So there's a time period that's involved in each one of them. The city has, we have several things on our list here that are priorities, but again, we have road maintenance things to talk about, Lee County transferring road maintenance over, the DOT type of things, and we're just, I'm here to help you get whatever priorities you want first, whatever is realistic concurrently. Like Matt and I have been meeting for the last three months on which jobs we could actually get to and start designing on so we could actually build them as soon as we can. So this is just an overview. We had the artillery view roads, and then the more of the community roads are Terry Street running from...
Could you bring that up, please, so that, I want people to be able to see the yellow roads. I don't want them to think this is the only, there you go. Thank you.
So the yellow roads are the community roads, West Terry, and parts of Benita Beach Road running from the interstate, from the interstate out towards Village Walk, we've got Terry Street, and Old 41 is running from, actually, Terry Street or Rosemary north to 41. These are not the major roadways, but they are roadways that are available. The area actually, this is, there's a lot of information here, and I'm just trying to keep it short, but the area from Rosemary to 41, you know, is a new roadway, it's ready for landscaping. That's an easy project to do. West Terry is easy. The school has, I understand the school has received some type of a budget to redo the landscaping in front of the school on Terry, and then running from Old 41, we'd be running all the way to Imperial. And then Imperial out is maybe not as much of a priority, but it really depends on what you want us to do, you know, as far as first things first. So this was just, there's so many different areas, but we really can't do everything, and it's laborious to go through all the maintenance contracts for, is it the median or is it the right-of-way? There's several different things on each roadway, and then there's the water, the water issues of what's available, how we're going to get our water source. The irrigation water, is it coming from Wellwater, BSU, or, you know, what's available in the area? So all these things have been, over the last three months with Matt and his team, we've been reviewing things, and just, it's a prioritization based on what's available for us to do the job and complete the job within a certain amount of time.
Okay. And your prioritization that you have on here, that you recommended based on the criteria is you have down here, is on the green sheet, that's the one that you're recommending?
Right.
Okay. All yep?
Yes, do you have any questions?
I do.
We're just looking for, we're just looking for basically approval from the city to do certain portions now and get them going.
I have a quick question there. I noticed in some of the areas it's recommended, there are some scheduled road improvements to happen in those areas, and I think some of the first questions that people ask are, why are you going to invest money in landscaping when five years later, you know, we may have to remove some of that? I mean, are you taking that into account with your prioritization as well?
Yes, we are.
Like, okay, good.
No, that's a good question. The areas that Matt and I talked about the most were, we have, there's a lot of conflicts because of all the utilities at the intersection of 41 and Benita Beach Road, and then, so we're going to be designing that with the whole project, but we don't think that's going to be the first thing that's done. The area that has not been improved from Vanderbilt Drive going on Benita Beach Road west to Hickory Boulevard, that area is supposed to change at some point in time, so that may not, that wouldn't be my first choice. I would do the roadways that people really notice the most, that we have control over from that point, Vanderbilt Drive to 41 and beyond going out to I-75. The other, obviously, we were talking about the downtown. Of course, we'd love to see Old 41 from Benita Beach Road all the way to Rosemary get handled, but I understood from our last meeting that that was in this meeting yesterday that got approved, that that was really a downtown redevelopment. We wouldn't have to put money in that because things are going to change there. The other part that Matt and his group and we talked about was the area going from where you last finished your project on Imperial going north from Terry Street, past Benita Isles, the new project by Minto. In our last, a meeting before last, we actually drove out there, and they were landscaping that roadway, and they're in the middle of that, and, you know, that has to get completed, and that area is actually slated for, we were working with Pam Lulich from Collier County, that is, that could be, it actually could be a grant from the state to do that roadway and screen that traffic that you see on I-75. And so those are things that, you know, we don't deal with on a day-to-day basis, but Pam Lulich from Collier County has been working with the state and the different agencies for the last 12, 13 years, you know, doing those type of projects. So that type of thing, we would design what we'd like to do, and then try to work into the grant program so you wouldn't be paying for it, so we get the benefit. So those type of things are, there's a lot of different factors that come into play, and that's a good question you had. What really is available is what we want to start on first and concurrently design the other things, and then have them play when they're ready.
And then, before I go to the rest of the Counsel there, I mean, this prioritization, it's not in concrete. This is something that's also fluid, because if you're working on a project and you run into a particular problem, you can always shift to the next priority.
Exactly, exactly.
Martha, what did you have?
Thanks. By the way, you're just way too modest about what you do, and I've seen your design, like the mayor said, I couldn't think of anybody else who would do the kind of work. The reason Naples looks so nice is because you've done a lot of that work.
Thank you.
And because you've worked with Pam, who happens to be the head of the roadway landscaping department in Naples, but lives in Pelican Landing.
Right, exactly.
And is helping you because she's a hometown girl.
We spend our weekends going through the meetings in Naples and doing the, you know, what's right here, what's not right here, this has to change, this went downhill, we have to, things change so rapidly here. I'm a landscape architect, and I have a degree in both horticulture and landscape architecture, which is really rare in our industry. So, you know, we always follow what's really happening and try to use a bulletproof material, but make it look great. You have color, texture, and all the rhythm of what you'd want to see in a living painting. And we are an award-winning landscape company, and we just won the top awards for landscape architecture in the state of Florida this year for projects we just finished. So, you know, we stand behind our work, and thank you, Martha.
Well, and I hope that some of this money will help get the historic homes done, that you've done all out of your pocket for our city, too. I have two questions. One is, in your, you've been driving along the roads for years, looking at and probably dreaming about, boy, I'd like to change that. Do you have an overall concept design for the city, like, you know, in architecture, we've talked about the old Florida style, or, you know, like they do in a sterile Mediterranean or whatever. Do you have an overall concept design? I have one more question.
Yeah, that's a good question. So many of these areas, if you, when you drive through Benita, the medians change from being three or four feet wide to maybe, you know, we're lucky if we get them 25, 30 feet wide. Depending on the width of the median and depending on where you are, I'm just going to preface this by talking about the restraints I've been working with Pam Lulich from Collier County on, you're restrictive when you get to roadway intersections, you're restrictive where there are signs, there's a billboard sign, a number of things kind of come into play, but major, the themes that I think that are important for roadways is that there's a change in texture and color, there's a canopy where it's allowed. In so many areas, like on Benita Beach Road going from the interstate, we have power lines that are about 15 feet overhead. You know, obviously, we can't use large canopy trees in those locations. We can use other materials that are going to really be more eye-level and take the place of a canopy tree as much as we can. But overall, I think the things that are missing in Benita is that there was, there's really, has never been really an underlying theme, like you're talking about, and the reason, it's just been, so many things were donated over the years, and people donate their services and maybe their product. I think if you see landscapes that you like, what you tend to like is the specimen quality material that's used and what it does to a landscape, instead of just, you know, I'm an advocate for native landscaping, I'll use it wherever it's deemed necessary and it's appropriate, and for low-maintenance needs. But blending a native palette with other elements like royal palms, the date palms, we have several different date palms we can use that give us texture in the landscape. The biggest, the thing that you notice that you don't notice is there's really not much change in what you see. You'll see trees, and there's a lot of ground covers in the city of Benita, we have just, and we have small patio trees, which really don't do, they don't work for a median landscape when you have 30 feet. You know, I think going from Benita Beach Road north on 41, you see a few Lagostum, a few Whitebird of Paradise. Well, what should have happened? There should have been canopy trees where we have, and themes, we can use sable palms and royal palms. In certain areas, we have to use frangible palms, it'll break off if somebody runs off the roadway, and we'll have those areas.
So Chris, it's fair enough to say that that's yet to be determined, right?
That would summarize it.
Okay. Do you have another question?
Yeah, thank you, well done.
I can talk all day, yeah.
Yeah, I'll come over to your house and talk to you, I also live in District 5. Okay, landscaping in front of the school, will you be designing that? I know, I mean, we...
Love to.
Yeah, I don't know how, what's going on with that. I know we've had some attempts at that before, and the trees didn't kind of work out, and in front of the school, and while we're at it, in front of the swimming pool, because that could be one long contiguous landscape design, instead of this and then this and then, you know.
Go ahead, Matt.
Recently, I'd met with some folks from the school board, as well as the principal of the Benita Springs Middle School. Something forthcoming, they will probably be asking Counsel if Counsel would consider with some of the funds set aside for the tree replacement in front of the school, if you would be, consider utilizing Christian to design those areas. So it hasn't come forward yet, but they're, they kind of indicated to me that they would be putting something together to then come before...
So as part of the plan?
The city council.
Well, and Ben, you know, there really isn't any design in front of the pool. You have that whole stretch there from Pine down across the school where we would have an opportunity to partner, you know, with doing something contiguous together.
Right, let's get rid of the 10-foot cyclone fence first.
Yeah, we're working on it.
I'm in charge of that, but thank you.
But the whole idea is that would be part of the plan that you...
You know, we had a discussion one morning about that, and so much of it, of course, just getting rid of the obvious things, but, and getting the, using more of an ornamental fence, decorative fence, and in combination with some hardscape and some, I think they're going to need some type of a signage type of element in there. And blending that in, the problem with the landscaping before, it was a wonderful idea, but unfortunately, we get monsoon rains in the summertime, 52 inches, and we don't get anything in the wintertime, so it's difficult for plant materials to be maintained in those conditions. So once we get consistent watering, which is the most important thing to any landscape before you fertilize, just make sure we have proper watering, then we, you know, then we have the maintenance program, and we can make anything, any area look great. It's just getting the right elements in place.
Yeah, and Benita Middle School, it really has a lot of great achievements, but it doesn't look like it from outside, and they really need some help. So if we can partner with the school and, you know, and combine that with our project in front of the swimming pool, which really needs it to, I think we'd come a long way.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. Chris, when you came up with the priorities, what did you use to say, okay, is it this one that we can do first because we can get it done quicker? Or what exactly did you use in terms of objectives?
Right. Well, just for instance, first, for 41, we want to target that first. We've got the, we've got the maintenance of the medians along 41, we just don't have the rightaways, so Matt's going to be working with Lee County on that to turn the right-of-way areas on both sides of the roadways over to the city, so when we do the landscape project, we can actually maintain those beautiful new specimen trees, shrubs and ground covers, and turf areas, so it has the look of what Benita should look like. Part of the problem is, we maintain the medians, number one, the design wasn't great to be something that's going to develop over time, number one, and number two, there was nothing happening in the roadways except for roadway, you know, these gang mowers, I'm thinking. And so when you turn over the maintenance to the city, we can control how that's maintained and what it looks like, just based, and a lot of it's grading, too. Some of it, you know, we have some, but the only thing that's really holding us back there is really more of just a maintenance turnover agreement, and then working with FDOT to make sure we don't get in front of those billboard signs. We can manage all that. So we were targeting areas that are really visible for people driving into Benita from Collier County going to 40, to Benita Beach Road, and north to the bridge is really one of the most noticeable areas, I think, we're going to target first. As you get past that and past Benita Bay, you've got the landscapes on both sides that really help the roadway. You know, Benita Bay did a beautiful job, Pelican Landing unheard of landscaping-wise, and they did their own, some of their own landscaping as you get up to Coconut Point. Those areas, we're not going to spend a lot of money on because they're already landscaped, and then we might just make the maintenance look better on those, but south of that, you see, there's just absolutely nothing. We want to continue the landscaping, the theme, all the way to where it's already landscaped.
So you're using kind of a least path resistance is a big part of what you're...
Yeah, because you designed it, and if you can just go right into implementation, that's what we're looking for.
Another question, Chris. Would you repeat what you said about from Vanderbilt to Hickory Boulevard? Is that something that's not high on the priority list at this time?
There was some mention that there was going to be some changes there, and I just, that's one area, I'm not sure that when it's going to happen.
I just want to clarify, Counsel, speaking of beach road from Imperial to, out to Hickory, that's a stretch of road currently that's maintained by the county. It's a Lee County road, so we, in terms of priority, it's high in our discussions with, speaking with Chris, but I think... Chris. But I think one of the things that needs to be addressed there is, and that's what we're asking for in this green sheet, is some direction to staff to work with the county on transferring at least portions of that roadway over to the city for maintenance so that we can design it and then maintain it at a level that's acceptable to the city.
Thank you.
I'd like to make the motion, then, that we go ahead and adopt the priority list, and that we do give them the right, the staff the authority to go ahead and make those connections that they need to with whatever entity they need to, to move forward.
I make a second to.
We have a motion in a second.
Second, the extraordinary landscape plan.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Horticulture.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Christian, go forth and make us pretty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, not me, I'm buying, however. All right, council, we are to the consent agenda, and we have A through G. Is there anything you would like to have on the consent agenda poll this time? Take your time.
A.
Item A.
Let me get to A.
Move the balance.
We have a motion to remove the remainder. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, Martha, item A.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to know what some of these, this is for the selection, a ranking of miscellaneous traffic engineering services. I'd just like to know what services these are for. What are we, what are we doing?
It's a, kind of a broad range of services that we ask from our traffic engineers. Examples would be traffic counts, annual traffic counts, which just counts the number of cars along our roadways, which is fairly standard. There's been some discussion about looking at possibly precluding or evaluating East Terry Street for, for large truck traffic. So, that would be a type of study that a traffic engineer would do to, to provide a recommendation either for or against evaluations of where crosswalks could be placed, in particular, mid-block crosswalks. So, they kind of run a gambit of things. Another example would be light timing, you know, if there's any advantage that can be had, or any possibility for changing a timing schema for an intersection to, to make it function better.
So, really, in response to the question, these are three firms that are being put in position to be used as needed throughout the year.
Okay.
By the city.
I just, you know, I've noticed a lot of flagging around US 41 and Benita Beach Road, and I know at the MPO, there's been some talk about a flyover, I heard from friends. And I don't know.
Actually, there's been a lot of talk about a PDNE study being done.
Yes.
Not a flyover in particular.
Yeah. Well, okay, so, because I got a call from one of the prospective people who might be selected to do that PDNE study. Yep.
This job would not be.
So, it has nothing to do with that.
No, this doesn't have to do that at all.
Yeah, okay. So, this is for minor, you know, stop signs, crosswalks.
Very straight.
This is something, Matt, that you do every year, is that you pick a stable of engineers so that some of these small projects that you don't have to come back to council for, these very small projects that you need done, like, in an instant. You need to have them pre-approved. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
That was my question. Miscellaneous, so it's miscellaneous minor. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it, Mayor.
Motion to approve?
I would say so.
Motion approves or second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, we have a public hearing, and there is no public comment allowed on these two objects. Is that correct?
I, on the first, yes, on the first readings, yes. And this is a public hearing, twofold. There is a first reading of an ordinance. Before we get to that, we do want to talk about, and this is Lisa Pace, make public leases around here, authorizing staff to prepare the necessary papers, including ordinances, resolutions, to be in the position to finance and meet city council's objectives for financing the downtown area improvements. You received two errata sheets. I will tell you that we probably had about 10 emails this, last night, all right, maybe more.
More than that.
Yes, on the rate lock agreement, there were people working late at night. We do have in the errata sheet that Diane put out, the most recently received rate lock agreement. The loan form is something that's still under discussion and negotiation, but we feel that before we close on February 14th, we can work out all the details.
Yes.
Lisa can give you any additional details as to the actual dollar amount, if you have questions as to breakage, defaults. All of those provisions are being worked at.
Yes. And to let you all know how we came to be, give you a little background about how we got to the point we're at now. Our debt consultant has issued a request for proposal for the debt issue. That means she sent out a request to all the different financial institutions, solicited their best rate, given the needs, the financing needs that we had. The lowest bid was Bank of America for 2.96, which is actually the, yesterday's end-of-the-day rate. That's why your documents were received so late, so we apologize about that. But due to the volatile interest rate conditions that we have, they seem to be changing hourly. So, we feel very fortunate. We did receive this great. It is for $13 million of principal. The average debt service will be approximately $1 million. It will be over 15 years, and we are asking for your approval for a rate lock today so we can lock in that rate. In the agreements, we have negotiated in this rate a make-whole prepayment provision. This will allow the city to prepay without penalty as long as the interest rates are above the 2.96. We have been told that given the current interest rate market conditions, this is the, the best provision that's available to the city. So, we do feel comfortable with that. Yes, sir.
Audrey, since this was not on the agenda originally, do we need to have a finding of an emergency purpose in order to do this, before we do that?
I don't, because I did talk about in the document that preparation of the documents would be done and be provided to city council prior to the meeting. We knew when we were preparing the documents, we wouldn't have it because, for example, the interest rates, we didn't have until, actually, today at 5:00. Is that the?
The scheduling document and the original agenda, Audrey Fields gives us the, the ability to do this. We were able to schedule it, and we drafted the green sheet so that we could do the first reading and have you all approve the rate lock agreement today.
So, you're asking for the first reading of the resolution is what you're doing?
The resolution will be.
Or we're asking us to pass a resolution approving this, and also go to the first reading of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay. So, council, would you like to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Question.
Motion and a second. Yes, go ahead.
What did we use the half-cent gas tax revenues for, for the last 14 years?
Yes, thank you. That was on my list. We were actually advised by our debt consultant to utilize pledging that particular stream of revenue for this, but because it would get us a better interest rates. We are, all of our financial analysis, we will be funding this debt service through our existing revenues. We don't foresee a need for any additional, any additional taxes or additional revenues to fund this debt service. We will be funding it primarily through the reallocation of gas tax. And we hope to utilize some road impact fees, but we're restricted on maybe just the roundabout cost. So, we have been researching this. Staff has been working on it for months, the city manager, public works, finance, and the attorney, making sure that we had everything structured properly. So, we just utilize that. And just like our, the existing debt service that we have now pledges all legally available, non-advalore revenue, that's the one that we have. So, this one, the debt consultant thought would get us a better rate, and it did. This is a really good rate based upon what we're seeing in the marketplace right now.
How much does that come to a year about, on our payment?
Our payment's approximately $1 million a year.
That's what I thought you said. Okay, thank you.
If I could also add to Lisa's comments.
Go ahead, go ahead, Carl.
Is, is that, as the area's value grows down there, that, what I'm calling the capture area down there, as that grows, we are hoping to use a greater percentage from the growth and the partnership with the county, which we'll talk a little bit later on, as well as our own growth there, to help pay some of this off, as opposed to looking at our general fund all the time. So, over time, we're expecting that growth, those growth numbers to get to the point where they're going to be handling most, if not all, of that annual payment. But that will be some time away after we get the projects completed, after the public sector has invested in the area more than they have now.
Yes. And if I might add, staff has already, we've been preparing, and this, all of our research has been working toward doing a budget memo for this year, for debt service that we will need this year. I think there's roughly about $178,000. And then, to line us up for the budget next year, so that, we set up documents so that we can reimburse ourselves. When the increment and the growth from Old 41 comes in, when we were able to receive the county's 50% share, we'll be able to reimburse ourselves for that. But we needed to go ahead and set up a funding mechanism for the debt service initially to get the, get the advantageous rate. And we feel.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I might just add one more thing. The financial consultant indicated to me last night that we are extremely fortunate, under the upward pressures we're seeing in this environment for interest rates, to get the 2.96 fixed for 15 years, because they are expecting these rates only to go up. In fact, she has already had clients who are accepting rates of around 3.5%. So, we're very, very fortunate to be in the position that we're at now. We expect the rates to continue to go up, and we're going to be locked low. And that's a great place to be.
Okay.
Can I make one more point?
Go right ahead.
I did want to let you all know that in all of our research and all of our review, from a financial standpoint, we feel that this is perfect timing for us to be doing this downtown development project. Because as we look forward in our capital improvement plan for the next 10 years, which is included in our budget, we don't see the significant level of funding for infrastructure that we have in the last 10 years. For example, we have spent over the last 10 years somewhere approximately around $70 million for East Terry, Benita Beach Road, Old 41 widening, the new connector for Imperial and Three Oaks. Whereas, right now, in the budget you have, we only foresee about $35 million for the next 10 years. Primarily, that's Benita Beach Road, the next phase, US 41 to Old 41 at about 11 million, and then also about 14 million for the Old 41 South. So, we feel it's a perfect timing from a financial standpoint, where we just don't have the significant financial outlays in the next 10 years that we have had. And we just think, we're very excited about it.
I'm sorry, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
So.
I'm sorry.
We didn't plan this tag team.
I'm hearing, I'm telling, you're telling.
I also remind the council, too, that if you're at all concerned about the pressure on the general fund for this million-dollar payment, in addition to the growth we expect to add to the payment over the years, remember, in about eight years, the finance, the refinancing we did will be paid off.
Yes.
On the current debt we have. So, we will be able to take a portion of those funds, if appropriate, we'll be able to take a portion of those funds and shift them over to this debt, debt payment as well. So, we'll be in great shape.
And Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, one more time.
Yes, sir. And we do have, we do have approximately, right now, with our existing debt service, we're funding at 85% from our road impact fees at 2.6 million. That will cease in eight years. And we really feel that hopefully our growth will continue. I know we don't want to live and budget off growth, but that will help us provide for Benita Beach Road, Old 41, things of those nature. And really, like I said, it is significantly less than we have seen in the past.
Good job. Yes.
Yeah, and this is retroactive to last January, so that we're capturing this year's growth, which I don't know that the county really kind of got that.
No, I, I will tell you, I guarantee.
Nod, nod.
I have to, and again, this is discussions I was going to have later, but I will have now.
Okay.
We, we had significant discussions with the county over the last several weeks, okay? Every rock has been turned over, including just being.
Frank, sorry.
Just being adamant, being adamant about the fact that we wanted this growth from this last year, because, with all due respect to everyone involved, it has taken the county a year to give us an answer on this. So, we told them we were not prepared to lose the growth from that year. The county does get it, and in January, we're going to be getting a check for $30,000 to start this fund from the county. And they know that.
Yep. Okay. All right. If we're done agreeing, well, maybe we should go. We have, we have a, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of the rate lock agreement. Any other discussion? I didn't think so. Roll call.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Absolutely.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Okay, now, you want to do the first reading of the ordinance?
Absolutely. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, authorizing the negotiation of a loan in an aggregate amount not to exceed 13 million from Bank of America Preferred Funding Corporation to finance certain capital improvements to the Benita Springs downtown area, providing certain other matters in connection with the making of such loan, and providing an effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance is scheduled for January 15, 2014, starting at 9:00 AM in these chambers. The ordinance is attached, is a copy of the errata sheet that went out yesterday, and it's actually the only item, I think, on the errata sheet. And it's attached. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, council, do you have any questions?
Oh, you know. Mayor.
Yes.
Is there any flexibility, you know, we had a list of things we'd like to see happen downtown. Somehow, that got pared down. I don't remember voting on paring it down, but we have three things: stormwater, sidewalks, and parking. I think that's three things.
And land acquisition.
And land acquisition.
There's four items.
Is there any flexibility if you need to bury utilities when you do the sidewalks?
Yes, I will tell you that all that was approved were those general categories.
General.
Specific projects beneath each of those categories was not defined.
Well done.
Okay, it is, so it's within the city's purview to make that decision, as long as we stay under $16 million principal. Anything over and above that is going to be on the city totally without county participation.
Sure.
Now, and again, we're only borrowing 13 million because we want to keep our, our borrowing to a minimum. But the additional 3 million to get us to 16 is already budgeted this year and ready to go.
Well, Chris Busk mentioned something. He said, well, we're restricted from being able to use certain kinds of landscaping because of the overhead utilities. And I'll say it again, but you need to bury those utilities in Old 41. It just looks industrial. Better, better done.
Plus, we need to be careful, because, I mean, part of what, the reason that this got passed by the county was that we were specific in what we were going to do. And now, underneath that general.
My category.
Yes.
Transportation, parking, and drainage, stormwater, that's, that, anything that has to be, happen ancillary to those functions is fine. But I think that if you go outside of that and say, well, you know what else we're going to do? We're going to do something, we're going to have a problem, so.
We need to be careful. The mayor is exactly right. We have to be careful. But I will also tell you something that the county agreed to, and that is, if we save money in a particular category area, we are allowed to transfer those surplus funds to one of the other category areas.
Very nice.
Because, again, as long as we're not over 16 million.
Sure.
Well, yeah, just if you're doing the, the off-site parking, or, you know, the side-street parking, or whatever, parallel parking, that that would be a time to bury stuff. Anyhow, I'm just telling you that it's a good time, if you're going to be doing some infrastructure work, to get rid of it. Okay, thanks, bye.
That'll be part of engineering function. Did you have something, Bill? And I'll come right back to you, Audrey.
I want to move it to the second reading.
Okay, a motion to second, to move it to the second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? I'll go to Audrey first, please.
Thank you. And that is, I noticed that the title block has changed slightly. I would like to reread the title block into the record.
Go right ahead.
It very clear, the ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, authorizing the negotiation of a loan in an aggregate amount not to exceed 13 million from Bank of America Preferred Funding Corporation to finance certain improvements to the Benita Springs downtown area, approving the execution and delivery of a loan agreement with Bank of America Preferred Funding Corporation, providing certain other matters in connection with the making of such loan, and providing an effective date.
Okay, we still have a motion and a second to forward this ordinance to a second reading. There is no public comment on this particular one. That will be at the second reading. Any other discussion?
Fantastic.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
All right, Audrey, we are to item, whatever that is, nine, or, yeah, or, well, let's see. Is your attorney here?
Yes, he is.
Okay, so you want to go to...
If we can have one item out of order.
Eight, eight.
Mr. Burke, if we could have him come up. And this is for item 11A.
11A.
And that is, just to give you a little introduction, Michael Burke is here. He represents the city of Benita Springs through Florida League of Cities. I'm losing it. I'm sorry, I'm not feeling too well today. He's going to talk about the Burt Harris claim that the city received from Attorney Jackson Bowman. And I'm going to let you proceed.
Okay. Good morning. Again, my name is Michael Burke. I'm a lawyer who's based in Fort Lauderdale and have been hired by your insurer, the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, the Florida League of Cities, to review a, what's known as a Burt J. Harris private property rights claim that has been brought against the city here. The way that statute works, just briefly, this is a statute which has an administrative process before a suit is filed. And that's what we're in right now. A property owner who feels that a specific action of government has inordinately burdened the use of their land, under this statute, must first present the claim to the government involved, in this case, of course, the city, with an appraisal indicating what they think the loss of value to their real property is by virtue of the specific act that they're complaining of. So, that's the process that we're in right now. They have filed that claim, that appraisal. The statute provides that the city, within 180 days of that claim being made, is required to respond to it by either coming to some sort of an agreement with the property owner who's making the claim, by offering some uses to the property which may not exist under your code of ordinances, such that you'd have to either engage in a zoning ordinance or a variance or something of that sort. Or third, to respond by saying, "No, we don't believe there has been an order burden here. Here are the uses to which you can put your property to." That's generally the response. Agreement, proposal for a deal, or here's the existing uses that you have of your property. This, this claim is extremely unusual. I've done a lot of land use litigation in Florida, and what's unusual about this claim is, the claim is being brought not by the person or entity who owns the land that's involved here. This claim is being brought by Carter Pritchett Advertising, who alleges that they own not the land, but several old signs that are located on Old US 41, I guess commonly called the Wonder Garden signs. What their claim is, so that you all understand that, is that they purchased these signs, apparently purchased them. We're not allowed to conduct any discovery right now. There's nothing of public record that indicates that they purchased them or paid them other than a bill of sale. In any event, they claim to own these signs, not the land. And they claim that after purchasing the signs, their plan was to rebuild or relocate these rather small signs, which are about 25 square feet in area, very small old signs, to rebuild 400-square-foot area billboards at that, at those locations or other locations within the city. They applied, they submitted permit applications to do that. Those permit applications were apparently pending for some period of time prior to my involvement. I guess there were some communications with the, either the council or administration of the city. Nothing was resolved. And ultimately, those signed permit applications were denied on the grounds that they did not meet, the older signs did not meet the definition of a billboard. That was the basic basis of the denial. Your code provides, or that a billboard sign can be rebuilt or relocated at another, at another area. And your code provides that a billboard is a minimum of 72 square feet in area and a maximum of 400 square feet in area. So, they argued that they were, that these signs were billboards, that they could be rebuilt or relocated somewhere up to 400 square feet. And that was denied on the grounds that they didn't meet that definition. The, the, the claim that they're making is that after they bought the signs, the city amended its code in December, excuse me, in 2012, amended its code to clarify this definition of billboard that I mentioned to you. To clarify that signs that were not at least 72 square feet in area did not qualify as a billboard, did not meet the definition of something that could be taken down, rebuilt, and relocated somewhere else. So, that was a clarification to your code. And in their claim here, they're asserting that that clarification, as I call it, as they call it, a change in the code, essentially took away the value that they had in what they argue was a right to construct large billboard signs based on their ownership of these small, old signs along Old 41. So, they have argued, I've submitted an appraisal, that if they were able to take these old signs and tear them down and build either there or at some other location a 400-square-foot billboard, that the value of that would be worth to them about $600,000. So, and they argue therefore, allow us to build these signs or pay us $600,000. The, the Burt Harris, what makes this case so unusual, as I said to begin with, is that these folks do not own the land. The Burt Harris Act statute that we're talking about here provides that a claim can be brought by a property owner, someone who owns real property. And real property is defined in the statute as meaning the land, including the appurtenances to the land, the structures and appurtenances to the land. Well, these, these signs, of course, are structures on the land. And so, they are, they're kind of trying to argue that this definition separates out various owners of real property. In this case, the owners of the land on Old 41 would be a landowner, a real property owner, and that they own real property because they own a structure or a pertinence that's located on land. There is no Florida law on this issue. This, this argument has not been advanced anywhere else in any reported decision that I'm aware of. The, in my judgment, a court will not accept it. However, I can't guarantee that to you. I know that you all read the papers and are well-versed in current events, and you see sometimes things happen in the law that it's hard to believe that happened. So, anything is possible. But I believe that, in my opinion, a reasonable reading of this statute would not allow the construction that's being argued here. And so, while I'm sure that, that it would be more valuable to Carter Pritchett if they could take an old 25-foot sign, tear it down, and build a, build a 400-square-foot billboard, that that would be, you know, they're going to get value from that. I don't believe that, under the Burt J. Harris Act, that they would qualify to make that claim here. They have not argued, at least to date, that the, that the city's change in its regulation should not have been applied to them, or that the regulations even prior to that would have, would have necessarily given them the right to construct these large billboards. So, that is to say, they haven't gone to court and say, "Give us a permit." This is strictly a claim for, for money that's being brought here under this claim. So, having said that, we're at the stage where, as I said when I started my presentation, that we need to respond to this claim. My advice to the, and recommendation to you all at this time would be to respond, to authorize me to respond in the following way. And that would be to say that we don't believe that, that you are an owner of land and real property that has a claim under the Burt Harris Act. Number one. Number, number two, that, you know, our regulations have not done anything to your signs. If you own these signs, fine, you have the signs. We haven't ordered you to take them down or to relocate them. You have what you bought. And number three, if you own the land, there's plenty of uses to this land that, that are permitted under our zoning code. And to set forth those existing uses as, as what we say to, in response to their claims. So, essentially to provide a claim, or provide a response that details the existing uses of the land, which is what you provide under your zoning code, and to tell them that they frankly, that this, this scheme should not be allowed to work and that they're not a property owner.
Excellent. Good synopsis. Yes, Janet?
No, I'd just like to go ahead and make the motion that we follow the council's recommendation.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, how much are we paying you?
Zero. That's the good news.
Thank you, and you guys just gave us a check for $25,000, so we're liking you.
That's why we want to keep him and get him out quickly. That's the best thing about me.
Get our rebate check.
That's awesome.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. No other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Nicely done. Thank you, sir. Okay, let's back crack here a little bit. All right, what do you have next for us, Audrey?
Okay, we're going to do some public hearings. I have second readings of the following ordinances. The first is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida pertaining to the density reduction groundwater resource area designated on the city of Benita Springs future land use map, establishing a moratorium on the processing of any comprehensive plan amendments within the density reduction groundwater resource future land use category located in the eastern portion of the city of Benita Springs, east of I-75 and north of Benita Beach Road, providing for legislative findings, purpose, establishing a specific plan for the density reduction groundwater resource area that balances the interest of development, conservation, and resource protection, declaring a temporary moratorium, providing severability and an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. I have reviewed the advertisement, and it is legally sufficient. Council can take public hearing at this time. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to help.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and it was reviewed by the local planning agency, who did move it forward.
Okay.
And found it consistent with the comp plan.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we will take public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward.
I'm Ed Fitzgerald, I live at 13100 Southampton Drive. I'm here to speak for, let's stay with the moratorium, no exceptions and no variations. The recent all-out effort by the Benita Chamber of Commerce to convince you to go against the wishes and fears of the people of Benita Springs is difficult to understand. The goals of the residents of Benita Springs and our commercial business owners should be for mutual benefit, aimed at the health of our business, the reputation of our city, and the local availability of quality services that we need on a daily basis. The chamber's willingness to ignore the fight presented over the last couple of months by residents and others to obtain the moratorium of zoning changes might become a wedge between us. I hope not. The need for fast development in Benita is less pressing than the chamber wants you to believe. Right now, local business is going through an economic downturn that is affecting the health of the city and the general comfort of the residents. What is needed now is a combined all-out effort to develop the heart of Benita. We need to reoccupy the vacant businesses and bring more commercial operations into central Benita. And that is the goal of the Economic Development Council to which you ascribe. I believe the expanded development of the eastern sensitive DRGR lands can wait for the proofs that the residents have asked for and that you have agreed upon. I say, let's stay with the moratorium. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Beverly Greenstein, Worthington Country Club. The citizen task force and the moratorium created at the December 4th council meeting are intended to review existing studies regarding water management, flood mitigation, and land use. The moratorium allows the time needed to put in, in place detailed codes so this valuable land can be developed to its greatest potential. The Chamber of Commerce indicates that the moratorium negatively affects the city of Benita Springs in terms of time, money, and opportunities for continued economic growth in our community. To the contrary, a year is a short time in the life of a city. With creative planning for aquifers, gray water, and flood mitigation, this property can be a standard for all communities. Done properly, it will provide enhanced economic growth, a greatly improved tax base, increased profit for the property owners, and will be an asset to an ever-expanding community. We cannot be blindsided by spot development, and we should not rush for perceived immediate gains without a comprehensive plan. And I want to thank the mayor and the city council for their diligence and attention to detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pam. Anyone else, please come forward.
I'm Carolyn Gallagher, Cedar Creek of Benita Springs. Most residents would agree that get the, that we should get the water right first. Development, if feasible, should come later. We're not anti-development. We're anti-premature development. The land has been there a long time, and it's not going away. We can wait just a little longer to do a thorough analysis of what's best for the city. The task force needs a moratorium to give the water task force time to understand the studies, issues, how all the pieces fit together, and come up with a plan to mitigate the water problems. Without that one-year time period, the developers could be concurrently pushing for a comprehensive plan amendment that allows increased density. The result? A race, and the winner takes all. Not wise for the city because both sides have rushed, and the thoughtful consideration for what's best for Benita residents is lost. Also of concern is that while the task force is studying water solutions, the city will be working on other DRGR-related issues. I believe the city, working in the background without citizen input, may not look at all the pertinent issues. Specifically, how future plan growth and development of nearby cities will affect our water issues, and maybe even other issues like roads. In conclusion, please stay the course and vote for the moratorium to make sure the time is available to properly study the water issues and formulate a plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Christine Ross, representing the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce here today. I represent 830 businesses, and many of these businesses are also residents and voters in your city. They came here because they could live and work in the same place and have very short commutes, and I just want to keep that in mind. I also want you to understand, we are fully and completely supportive of the work of the Water Task Force. We wanted a task force to be formed with our request to begin to plan for what's going to happen on the DRGR. You do not need a moratorium to have a task force spending a year figuring out what happened with the 209 watershed study that you all executed and paid for. Again, we're fully supportive of the task force. Deny this moratorium. It is a negative, anti-growth, anti-business word that has nothing to do with the Water Task Force going forward, and at the same time, the comprehensive plan work on parallel paths to move us forward at the beginning of this economic improvement. We need jobs. We need to put people back to work, and planning with the excellent staff that you have here for what's going to happen with that comp plan amendment is a very prudent, reasonable posture. The chamber is not advocating for a predetermined density of any kind. That's for the task force and the city council to figure out, along with staff. We are advocating for a balanced approach to responsible development and environmental protection. We believe there are three water issues. Water flowing and flooding, which was addressed in the 2009 supply watershed update study. It's there. Water quality, which was addressed through the 2011 stormwater update for the city. And the water supply, which is under the purview of Benita Springs Utilities. As such, a wealth of information, data, and expert... As such, a wealth of information, data, and expert opinion and recommendations already exists. The Water Task Force should look at all of those. Getting the water right entails close examination of the existing information and supplementing or augmenting it through necessary studies. We agree with all of that. Data analysis will only help you and needs to amend the comprehensive plan and create a new future land use category. All of that should go into this comp plan amendment. The city's urban fringe residential district provides a great example of how the city can work in tandem with development. Entities to amend the comp plan and create a new FLU category that incorporates development standards that are high and sustainable, and ensures responsible development and environmental protection at the same time. Lastly, if you cannot deny this moratorium, you need to put something like 4C back into this document so that the comp plan amendment can be done simultaneously with the Water Task Force. What you have done is created, in de facto, a two-year moratorium. That is not what folks said they wanted. When this motion was made, it was for a one-year process. Do not take us back by two more years. We're not advocating rushing. We've been at this for over 14 years, this has been studied. Let's go carefully forward on parallel paths. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would come forward, please do so.
Morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, council members.
Good morning, Dan.
My name is Dan Wagner. Is that better?
Yep.
I live in Worthington Country Club, have it for a long time. Talk to you people now and then. I believe in you, I hope you believe in what we have to say. We're kind of disappointed, actually, in some of the council members and some of the chamber members especially, as to how they look upon us who are trying to make sure that our property is maintained, that we don't lose our property, doesn't cost us a lot of money because of water failures. You don't seem to know who we are. I'm going to try to explain who we are. We're Benita Springs residents, we're property owners, we're taxpayers, we're homesteaders. Many of us have lived here, most of us lived here 15 to 20 years. We are your customers. We hire professionals from Benita Springs, doctors, dentists, tax advisors, medical facilities. We buy groceries, medicine, automobiles, boats, furniture, appliances, gasoline, clothing. Probably some of you have seen us in your stores, your office, helping your business survive over a long period of time. Somehow or another, that new 20,000 people you want to put in a DRGR, their money seems better to you than ours does. That's disappointing. We hire service vendors, air conditioning repair people, plumbers, painters, dock and retaining wall contractors. We eat out a lot. Benita Springs has tremendous restaurants, and we eat out a lot. That's income. We use Benita beaches, and we clean Benita beaches. We vote, we work at the pool, polls, we work for candidates, we help elect you, we back your worthy projects when called upon, we go to church, and we help the poor. Are you starting to recognize us? Have you seen us around the last 15, 20 years? Actually, we're your neighbors. We're your friends. By the way, we have sincere concerns over quality and quantity of water issues in the DRGR. Will you help us? Will you help your client, your customer, your neighbor, and your friend solve this issue correctly? We will be happy to work with you. I hope you'll work with us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning. Fred Forbes, Hunter's Ridge Golf and Country Club, resident of Benita Springs. To kind of echo what Dan Wagner said, two things. Number one, in November of 2012, I had a meeting, actually, it was more on the homeless shelter, but there was at least a city council member there, there was a city manager, I know Audrey, our good city attorney, was there, and somehow, as a sidebar discussion, doing something with the DRGR came up. And it became very clear that there was two schools of thought. There was, this is a land planning project, and I said, no. You've got to get the water right first, you've got to look at the flooding and all that. You do that, then you can develop the DRGR, but you can't go off and develop it without doing that. At the spring of this current year we're in, just before the Baraco Report Study went out, I had another meeting, and that meeting was with a different city council person, and again, senior staff, and the same subject came up, and I said, look, you've got to get this flood thing looked at, as well as the other aspects of the water in the DRGR. Now, we're all saying that this moratorium's going to cost a lot of time. If we'd have done what we should have done first, we would have lost almost a year plus, point one. Point two, the comment was made that the city paid for a study of 2009, which it did, and that was South Florida Water Management. But the conclusion at that point, and the city of Benita Springs and the DRGR was just a small part of that study, was, and that was Roger Cops' words, we tried all kinds of things to reduce the flooding in Benita Springs. We didn't find anything yet that was economically feasible, and even looked at some things that were not. So that tells you that this is a serious issue. Now, during this moratorium, it's not going to be a land planning. First, we've got to find out what the effects of flooding are, and what you'd have to do to design criteria of South Florida Water Management to reduce flooding, or at least not make it worse by developing the DRGR. Also, we've got to put to bed this thing of the groundwater recharge is not significantly contributed to, and that's said in an unpublished report, but also the published reports of '05 and '07 say that it significantly contributes. So we've got to put that to bed. Then finally, the presentation by Eric Livingston, he indicated that what was proposed, we would actually more than likely contribute to pollution, and even if we reduce it 10%, we're still below the mark that we need. So I would urge you to move forward with the moratorium. I think we can all work together on this, and I think that we can work with the chamber and take care of their interests. I'm not against development, never have been. So thank you very much, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, I'm Meg Jacobson from East Benita Springs. I've been here before, so I'll be brief. I'm a strong supporter of the moratorium, and I want to thank the four council members. Thank you very much for supporting it. Please do not give up and vote again. And I'm asking the other three to please reconsider your previous votes of no on the moratorium. I strongly disagree with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm pro-development, I've been in business for over 50 years. Oh my God, that's a long time. And the fact is that Benita Springs is not dependent upon the development of the DRGR to be a successful city. We have thousands of residential sites, do you guys know that, in East Benita Springs? Thousands of them that are going to be developed that can help the whole city's development? We don't have to have the DRGR right now. It's not a requirement for us to be successful, and it certainly doesn't say to developers, Benita Springs is anti-development. You've already approved thousands of sites, so I think that's a bit of rhetoric, and the fact is that the moratorium isn't going to hurt the city. If anything, one would assume the developers will be happier when you get the water right. That's what it's all about. I mean, they need to have a city that's viable and an area that's viable, so I urge you, please, support the moratorium, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Ron Pure, Benita Springs. Can you hear me? Can you all hear me? The DRGR, the woman mentioned there are thousands of building sites. I'll tell you, if anyone wants to take a ride down Benita Springs Road, which I did last week on a couple of occasions with some fellows, it's amazing how many acres are at the eastern end of Benita Springs that are shovel-ready. I mean, it's preposterous for the chamber to suggest that we need development jobs when we've got so much empty acreage ready to boogie on. I'd like to get some answers today, if it's possible, not at this moment, but maybe Audrey can fill us in on, what is the deal that this mining company that's doing a booming business, by the way, we spent some time on the mining site last week, and the trucks were rolling in and out of there, heavy-duty, a lot of aggregate leaving that site? But what exactly is the time period that the window, I should say, that the mining company can remove aggregate from that site? Are there any requirements when they close the site with respect to landscaping, filling, and so on? And I got to tell you that, reading about the players that will be on this board, I'm pretty sure that some will be in favor of developing the DRGR. To what extent, we don't know, until they arrive at a conclusion, but what will happen is we may be caught with our pants down with respect to acting now to formulate new impact fees, upping the ante to do whatever it is that developers would choose to do in our city. I know that there have been some arrangements made in downtown, or some reductions here and there. Furthermore, I think a lot of people are fed up with the city handing over money to prosperous businesspeople along Old 41, just as a sidebar comment, along with what I've expressed with respect to the DRGR. But I think the impact fees and the inspection fees by both the city and the fire district, which reduced their inspection fees of late, two, three years ago, I think all of these things should be kept in line with what our expectation and anticipation is with what will happen in our city as far as the demand to build and develop is concerned. So I hope you move forward with that. And also, Mayor, if something is taken out of order, this is a question, the signage thing that was discussed before this, can someone address that as though we're after the midway public comment area at this point, or must we wait around for the public comment?
Public comment midway, not right now, we're in a public area.
I know, but that was before the sign.
This is a hearing on the moratorium.
Thank you.
We can discuss it at greater length another time.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, wish to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Jesse Purdon, Second District. There's a couple of things I want to talk about with this. I feel that the people who are advocates for the DRGR are being unfairly demonized, but at the same time, the people who are not for it are getting looked at as if they're some kind of crazy environmentalist. I don't think that's the case either way, I think really the truth is more in the middle. I think what we all want is what's best for Benita Springs, as we should. The thing is, that no one is trying to develop anything now. We're talking about getting it all rolling. We're not talking about throwing up buildings next week, that's not how things work. We have to put things through how many steps to get anywhere even to get it started. So what we did with the moratorium, the reality of the situation, like it or love it, it's more than a year. There's no other way to put it. Even if we put, which I think we will now get to at the end, strict time parameters on the task force, and exactly what it is that we expect from them, time parameters on what needs to happen, when it needs to happen, and then say, hey, at the end of the year, are we ready to vote? Because if not, all we did was kick it down the road for another year without anything happening at all, which isn't what we want to do. Now, like I said, it has to be something that's thought and planned out, but I don't think that the chamber or any other advocate for the DRGR is saying, let's pollute the water, let's build something tomorrow. What they're saying is that development is crucial to where we're going to go as a city, and it's things that need to be considered with great minds, and it's things that need to be considered over time, but it's things that need to be considered. It's not things that need to be considered a year, and then another eight months down the road, it's things that we need to start talking about, because without the conversation, nothing happens. I would say that development is important to Benita Springs because the steroids hitting the gas. Naples is what Naples is. Fort Myers is growing. We have such a gem right here, this city. We are geographically located in one of the most beautiful and advantageous places in the entire state. We have the best water, we have some of the best leaders, we have some of the best people, some of the best businesses, some of the best residents. So for us to do nothing for an extended period of time isn't something that I think should be entertained. Now, I'm not naive, you guys voted four to three, if I were to throw money down right now, it's going to go four to three in a couple of minutes. That's fine. I would just say, moving forward, clear, objective goals for the task force that are looked at, that we know about as citizens, so we know that it's not five guys, and I actually, I know some of the guys on the task force in there, guys who are going to be sitting around drinking coffee, not doing anything. Fred, you're a great guy. But something that we can say, hey, here's what's happening, so we know something's happening, so that it doesn't, it's not the message to the business community, it's not the message to the surrounding communities, it's not the message to our citizens that we're going to do nothing, that we're going to sit here, we're not going to take the time to get things done, my time's almost up. But anyways, clear objectives, I think there needs to be a comp plan within a year, and I think at the end of the year, we need to vote. Yes or no? I don't even think the four or three, I don't think the people who voted necessarily against it are necessarily against it, I think they wanted a little more time, and that's fine. But now that that time is here, and now that you're about to vote, assuming you vote the way you did, clear, objective goals, checked up on, monthly, two months, whatever your plan is, somebody needs to come up with how that's going to be done and how we're going to know about it, so that we can see that something's actually happening. Thank you, Merry Christmas to all.
Nicely done. Next speaker, please. Let's see, I recognize you, so.
Am I allowed to speak again? Am I allowed to speak again? I'm trying.
I'm going to allow it, if you're going to be brief.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to be very brief, I just want to reiterate one thing, and that is, we are dependent on the results of the task force, on the water. Remember, it's limited to water only, no zoning things or any other things, just water. We are limited to their results. Before you could even begin to write a comp plan, certainly you could think about it, but if you don't know if you can build, where you can build, and what you can build, which I'm hoping the Water Task Force will tell us, you can't move forward. You have to put the cart before the horse. And I do believe that there are areas of agreement between many of our residents and the chamber, many areas. I can name a few, but I won't at this point. And I also wanted to say that, if you remember back a month and a half ago, I stood up here and I said, I really do think we need three years for a moratorium, and I was told that that wouldn't work, the city would not do it that long. But we need to know where we're going, if we mitigate the water, then we need to mitigate it, and really, we need to see if it works before we proceed to develop that area. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
I have a question. Can we develop without your approval anyways?
No.
Okay.
Hi.
Good morning. For the record, Nicole Johnson, here on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida. The Conservancy does support the moratorium, as you had amended it at your last meeting, and we ask that you approve it. And we support the task force as the mechanism by which the city is going to figure out all of these water resources issues, excuse me, how the city is going to get the water right, and do that before contemplating any comp plan amendments that would increase the density and intensity of use within the DRGR. Getting the water right means getting the water right first, and not having comp plan amendments go on a parallel track. And I will point out, first of all, the Water Task Force, it's more than just guys, and we have our first meeting in January, and we will be setting up our organizational structure of what we want to do, how we want to do it. It will be publicly noticed. So, we certainly want to have members of the public interested parties there. So, we invite everyone to be part of that. One of the major issues that has come up with the moratorium is what is the rational nexus for this moratorium? Is there one there? And so, the Conservancy believes that a recap of the past several months is something that could help to reinforce the fact that the moratorium is relevant. It is to protect the citizens, and it will serve a public purpose. First of all, the moratorium and the citizen water task force, as others have said, it's not about no development. It's about recognizing that in the DRGR, water resources must be the foundation of all future planning efforts and decision-making, and the majority of council believes that the Baraco Plan was not sufficient and didn't do that. Such a determination was based on many factors. You had water experts that came in and presented. Roger Kopp, who was the primary author of the hydrology portion of the South Lee County Watership Plan Update, provided his professional opinion, and one of the things that he said is, you need to look at reservoirs, additional water storage. Where should that go? How large should they be? How deep should these reservoirs be? Are reservoirs appropriate? That hasn't been looked at yet. Eric Livingston, the former Stormwater Administrator for Department of Environmental Protection, he also presented, and he focused on a lot of facts, but one of the things that he pointed out is that the Imperial River is designated as an impaired waters, meaning it's not meeting its water quality standard. It has a total maximum daily load reduction of 25% for total nitrogen, and this hasn't been defined as how you're going to do that in the DRGR. In fact, the Baraco Plan only recommended a 10% reduction. Who has to pay for that balance of 14%, 15%? It's going to be the taxpayers. So, now you're at the moratorium. This is going to allow you time to address these water issues with appropriate specificity before the city begins the comp plan amendment process. Because if we don't get it right, it's going to be the taxpayers that have to foot the bill. So, the Conservancy does not see this as being unfriendly to business. It's about protecting the community and taxpayers, and it's not about doing nothing. It's about making sure that the basis for future DRGR changes has as its foundation proper water planning. That will benefit residents, visitors, businesses, and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
George Jonas, the Chief Restructuring Officer for SNS Bank, the owner of the mine. It's my understanding that since the city's been incorporated, there's been nine studies and hundreds of thousands of dollars spent studying the various aspects of the DRGR. And for reasons that really completely escape me, these studies have been deemed inadequate. So here, we're facing the prospect of a moratorium and the establishment of a citizen task force. The folks on the task force, well-respected individuals, well-accomplished in their various fields. To my knowledge, though, I'm not sure they're professionals in the area of water science. We certainly value citizen involvement, but don't think a task force by itself can accomplish its objectives. Having the Water Task Force on its own is not constructive and can't possibly address all the technical issues and potential information gaps that will likely be encountered and very well might need some support. We absolutely agree that water issues need to be addressed, but they can be addressed without this moratorium. The city and the task force have a perfect opportunity to put theory into practice and synthesize all the work that's been done to date through a concurrent processing of our plan amendment. As gaps in the information become apparent, and they will, we can address them in the context of a real project. As planning concepts evolve through the Water Task Force, they can be applied in a real-life situation. As the chamber of commerce gentleman mentioned, this is a de facto two-year moratorium. For us, it's more like four years. We started conversations with the city in May of 2012. Over a year ago, we submitted a developer agreement. So here we are, looking at almost four years for the mine that you can so blatantly see on the map there, to get any kind of processing going, not an answer, a process going. I do work all over the country, and most municipalities, we are seeing the light at the end of the worst economic recession we've seen since the Great Depression, and most municipalities are trying to replenish their coffers. We have a moratorium in place, or one's being proposed to be in place. The DRGR is over 20% of the landmass of the city, yet it's a net user of income. And this is costing everybody a lot of money, including the city, on the present value of the income stream that eventually will happen from this property, I think, I hope. You know, cities flourish by, and raising the standard of living of its people by planning for smart growth. In areas I've seen that stagnation, no development, moratorium happens, it's not in the betterment of the city and the planning for the city to have things like this. I've been involved in large-scale master plan community development all my life. I was responsible for all the South Florida assets for a company called Arvita. One of our communities was called Weston in Southwest Broward, which was actually incorporated into one of Florida's finest cities. And we did things there that were never utilized before because we worked in cooperation with the municipalities, in cooperation with the conservancies, with the NGOs out there. The city has an opportunity here to be at the forefront of cutting-edge water technology and other plan concepts. It needs to seize on this opportunity to merge the task force, to have their work be done concurrently with the processing of our plan amendment, to create the kind of synergy that's going to result in a betterment of the city. The inability of the city to make decisions, despite the time, effort, and dollars that is spent on these studies, as well as by landowners trying to process the rights, has created tremendous uncertainty surrounding our rights, our ability to process, and continue to significantly devalue our property. We therefore...
Your time is up, but go ahead and wrap up.
I'll wrap up here now. For the following reasons, we think you all should have us, our plan amendment be concurrent with a task force. Number one, it's the right thing for the city to do. Number two, as Councilman McIntosh said, this is your job to process amendments with whatever outcome happens. Three, it's going to promote smart growth and lead to technologies that don't currently exist, all the while addressing the water issues that are so critical to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Morning, Mayor. Members of the council. For your record, I'm Russell Shrop with the Henderson Franklin Firm here today, also representing the Benita Grand Mine. In the letter that I sent to you, thank you, in the letter that I sent to you in late November, and again at my presentation during the first public hearing on this item, I went through the history today at great length relative to the mine and the future planning efforts that it is engaged in with the city. I won't go through that history again today, but will simply restate, I think, the conclusion that the history leads to, and that is that the ability of the mine to continue with the comp plan amendment process that it has already started is certainly well justified in light of the mine's history and should be permitted to continue. It's even more apparent now, as a result of points raised by the chamber and others, particularly regarding the de facto time period that will involve a moratorium on plan amendments. I would like to emphasize two simple points from a legal perspective today. The first is the time involved in the processing of plan amendments. I have not processed a plan amendment through your city from start to finish. I have done so in many other jurisdictions. I can tell you that it's very difficult under the processes of Chapter 163 to do anything in less than nine to 12 months minimum, and sometimes more. So, in fact, as the points have already been made, with a moratorium on processing plan amendments for one year, you're actually looking at a two-year time window before any plan amendment would see the light of day. So, if you stop the mine's plan amendment from moving forward at this time, it will essentially be a one-year moratorium and not a two, essentially be a two-year moratorium and not one year. The second point I would emphasize today is that the purpose of the moratorium, like all land-use regulations, must be to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Yet, in this case, it's difficult for me to see how that is being achieved. The moratorium on its face does not apply to permitting or zoning within the DRGR area. With all due respect to the comments made by the Conservancy in the attempt to bootstrap some sort of public purpose onto this moratorium, all that the moratorium does is prevent the city from acting in its legislative capacity, including acting in a manner that might very well protect and enhance the public health, safety, and welfare. At this point, after nearly two years of working with the city and looking at perhaps an additional two years of delay before any plan amendment could be considered, frankly, we've reached a point where I need to advise my clients on the options that are available if this moratorium goes into effect, so that they can protect their rights and associated value with the property. On behalf of the mine, I would request that either the moratorium be denied, or if it is approved, that an exception be allowed to permit the mine's conference of plan amendment that has been filed to proceed accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Come on forward.
Good morning. For the record, Kath Himmograph. I've had to digest all this before I've spoken. As you know, the moratorium is not needed. I'll say it. I've said it before, and I'll say it again. I'm not a member of the chamber. I've no financial interest out there. But you know, Lee County drew this line years and years ago. This is going to be the DRGR. And when it was found and that the water recharge was not as critical as they thought, now, all of a sudden, the East Benita property owners have jumped on the flooding bandwagon. Well, let me tell you something. The flooding issue has nothing to do with any development on this property. The flooding issue would come from a sheet flow from Lake Trafford and East Benita in the Everglades, as has happened several times. As was stated in the Baraco Report, there are no flowways there. Nothing, that property, if anyone knows where it is, has taken the time to drive, I know some people have, is just east of Citrus Park. Citrus Park has been there for 40 years, and I don't believe they ever had a flooding issue. You know, there is such a thing as property rights, and we're not just talking about the mine. There are other property owners there, and they have the right to develop their property. South Florida Water Management, I wish they were on this task force, because I believe they could really contribute to it, but I think they saw the handwriting on the wall. Studies, this has been mentioned so many times, so many people before me have said it much more eloquently. What's the rush? Not only 14 years that we're incorporated, but long before that, studies were done. The Baraco Report gave you three options. Nothing was said that if you accepted their report, that you had to accept their density. Okay. I'm going to talk out of context, but let me bring up the mine again. At the last meeting, I said that they should not receive a special exemption. Well, let me give you this scenario. What if they decide, well, we can't work with the city, so we will withdraw our request to be annexed to the city, and we'll revert back to Lee County? Do you really think the Lee County Commissioners are going to be concerned about any density regulation? My goodness, they would want the maximum they could get. So, I'm telling you this. You were elected to make these decisions. Number one, we do not need the moratorium. It has been said so many times today. You can do away with the moratorium. The task force can go along, but staff has to work in conjunction. Otherwise, two years, three years, four years, who knows? There are people here that say, oh, we don't want any more people here. Well, that's great. Pull up the ladder, pull up the moat, whatever. I've got my piece of paradise. I don't want any more. As I said, other people said it much more eloquently than I did, but listen to what they said. I know a lot of you have been receiving emails, and I would even say intimidated, and in some ways, I think threatened. You better vote this way or else. I'm going to throw out this challenge. Vote down the moratorium. Someone have the courage to say, I've listened to more information, and I've come to the conclusion, we do not need the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Alberto Bahier, Macom Lane. The fact of the matter is that our city has been mismanaged from its get-go, and the reason why this city has not reached the potential that it would have had the reality been otherwise is because those deep-pocketed investors that would have made this their terrestrial paradise for vacation home purposes, as well as for additional purposes, such as their commercial agendas, is because they've put the magnifying glass on it. They're looking at it, and they're saying, what is the prospective leadership going to look like? And it doesn't look very good. They look at what the past leadership has been like, and they don't like what they see. The reason why the city has been trashed, and our waters are impaired, et cetera, is because greed has been at the center of what composes the city of Benita Springs in terms of the government and the management. What we are doing, I implored for a moratorium, I implored for a task force. They've both been granted, so for that, I'm very happy because it's a step in the right direction. Now, the magnifying glass is on who has the leadership elected, or selected, if you will, to partake in that task force. And, of course, how is that task force going to perform? How are the leadership reacting to it? Are they going to be consistent in what appears to be a good strategic planning? So, I anticipate that the vote will be what is in our best interest, and I'm counting on it. I'm encouraged by that fact. And let's look at it not from a micro perspective. Let's open up to a macro one. Because this is a, we had an unbelievable opportunity here when the city became a city. I said that right at the beginning when I spoke with Paul Pass and your predecessor, Mr. Gary Price. And we missed the boat, but it's never too late. So, I would hope that we can take a different approach to looking at these things from the perspective that I've proposed here. Let's stop bickering with each other as we govern, or react to satiric political funnies, overreact in a manner that is reflective of the kind of leadership that we are, because it's frankly, like the letter said, pathetic with regards to who was being referred to. Well, let's not be pathetic in our approach to addressing people that in certain people's opinion might be misbehaving, because it speaks very loudly. Let's be elegant, let's be, most importantly, mature, and conscientable about the obligation that having a leadership posture entails. Many thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Donna Stone, resident of Worthington Country Club and a member of the External Affairs, and I represent, I help represent 799 units with over 1,400 tax-paying citizens. 'Twas the week before Christmas, and all through the D- 'Twas the week before Christmas, and all through the DRGR land, water, water everywhere, and not a drop to drink with no sign of man. Not a creature was stirring in the DRGR, not even in Gatorland. The city council was sleeping, all snug in their beds, with visions of commerce dancing in their heads. And I and my friends settled down for a long Benita Springs dry winter, when what to my wondering eyes should appear but a moratorium plant for our water protection for a year. As we left City Hall with joy in our hearts, we all proclaimed Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good year. We received a present recently with the four ambulances returning to the fire stations. Now we can get the big bow on the best gift with the passing of a year moratorium on the DRGR and getting the water right. Thank you.
Ah, poet. Next speaker, please. Anyone else coming? Okay. You got a hard act to follow there, buddy. I hope it's poetry.
Maybe you can sing, dance.
Engineers do not do poetry.
I don't do poems.
Interpretive dance, maybe?
Thank you. And the, I agree that the moratorium isn't necessary.
I'm sorry, your name for the record. I apologize.
I'm sorry, Dennis Gilkey. I'm a resident of Benita Springs, and I've been involved in the business community for the last 30 years. And during that time, I have been involved in quite a bit of public-private partnering, as you probably know from different communities I've been involved in, starting with Benita Bay. But I do agree with the chamber and some of the other speakers that this isn't necessary, and I think your city attorney has said that as well, is you can, you can decide whether you accept or pass, or hear, or transmit comprehensive plan amendments in the meantime. However, what I would suggest is that the water task force, which I'll be a part of, and I look forward to working with the other groups on that, that probably one of the things that will come out fairly soon, well, we might need additional studies, we might need additional technical support, and I think that's really actually on the agenda to start with. And I, and some of the other couple of members that are, that are on that task force have told you in previous hearings that, well, maybe we need to update or have a more specific study for the '09 watershed plan update, that type of thing. And if that's needed, then the city has to decide to spend money for such studies, and if you do that, you shouldn't do it twice. What you should do is say, if we do that, then it should also satisfy the necessary data and analysis for any future comprehensive plan amendment, so that you're not saying, we'll do it, we'll scope it out for the task force, and then we'll scope it out later for a comprehensive plan amendment. That can be done altogether, and it should be, for the benefit of the taxpayers and for yourself. But there will be, things like regulations, they do need professional help and support for the task force to be knowledgeable and make the recommendations to you. So I think, I expect you should anticipate that. So I wouldn't dismiss the business community concerns, and please don't ignore private property rights, but I think to get the water right, we can do that, and we can also do that if you decide to do the moratorium. And what I'd like to pass out is a recommended language for paragraph 4C. It's different than what was taking out, taken out last meeting, and I'll read it for the audience once you have your copies, and I have copies for everybody. But basically, it says that this, in essence, the city, and I'll read the specifics in a minute, that the city can move forward with some of its studies and data analysis based on the input from the task force concurrently during that moratorium period. And it also says that you would not, in that vein, you would not be doing a transmittal hearing, you would not be doing an adoption hearing, but you could at least, based on the feedback and interaction with the task force, move forward in a concurrent manner, and if studies are needed, obviously, that they would support the data and analysis legally required, technically required, for a comprehensive plan amendment. So let me read it for the benefit of the audience as well. Paragraph 4C, and that right now is deleted in the draft that you have in front of you of the moratorium. If applicable, based on the input from the citizens' water strategy task force, authorize appropriate data, analysis, and studies necessary for developing comprehensive plan amendments and land development regulations deemed appropriate by the city, Benita Springs City Council. Although such work may be performed as initiation of the comprehensive plan amendment process, no transmittal or adoption hearings would be set until after the end of the moratorium. So assuming that you do adopt the moratorium, I would strongly suggest you include this wording into your ordinance, so that you're not tying your own hands, that you can't spend a dollar or two, or have a technical analysis done to support none of the task force work, but the future comprehensive plan amendment that we would envision hopefully to happen one way or the other, either via the city or by the individual property owners. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. All right, seeing none, I will end the public comment on this. And council, any comments? What's your pleasure? Anyone have any comments, questions? Go ahead.
Mayor, if I could have about four minutes, you know, going through this process once again, it really came to my attention.
There you go.
You're so, you're so funny. But you know, if it runs over four minutes, I'll have the prerogative of holding the floor. Okay.
Go ahead.
Over the last eight years, you know, we've been through this, as it's been said, addressing this issue several times. And, you know, it hasn't been until this, this last go-around that I really understood how this was being triggered and what was going on from our comprehensive plan and the visioning of the people who set up our comprehensive plan in the beginning of the city. So I've been reading the comprehensive plan a lot more closely, and, because we've been talking about comprehensive plan amendments, how do you do that? I believe that the Baraka report, the Delisi report, even the RAL report, were all insufficient to address what the comprehensive plan was requiring us to do about the DRGR, and in the perspective in which the comprehensive plan talked about doing it. Okay, 1.7.1 is a comprehensive plan amendment, I mean, the comprehensive plan policy, and it says, "In order to best protect groundwater resources by year-end 2004, the city shall complete a study to identify the types and intensities of uses that shall be allowed within the DRGR. And to determine the most effective and appropriate techniques to ensure the maintenance of adequate quantity and quality of surface and groundwater resources, the study shall include, but not, shall not be limited to, evaluation of the following factors in the study area: subsurface and surface water resources, existing uses and those having received approval prior to the adoption of the city's comp plan, Benita Plan; soils, wetlands, habitats, species, and their quantity and quality; the Imperial River and its historical and present floodways and flowways; drainage and stormwater patterns and flooding; the long-term water and wastewater supply and disposal needs and plans of Benita Springs' utilities; resource protection measures applicable and contained in the city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations; allowable uses and their density intensity; existing and planned infrastructure in and affecting the area; South Water Water Management, county ownership, and then one, and the last one, and projects affecting the area; and potential positive or negative effects of possible new land uses on the resource base and new or amended best environment management practices needed by the city to further its control. Control. Why would he use the last word of all of that, "control"? Because, and I talked to the city attorney several weeks, months ago, really, about our well field ordinance, which I've mentioned before, we haven't updated. And I looked at, again, the objective, the policy objective, which refers to this study in 1.14, in which it says, the city, this is the objective of the policy. "The city shall discourage the proliferation of urban sprawl by maintaining or increasing densities consistent with flood hazard considerations between Old US 41 and I-75 to encourage infill and redevelopment." And the policies to back that up are two. Look at the study, reference in the policy I read before, to determine the land uses most appropriate in the DRGR. And then it says, "The city will allocate moderate to high densities adjacent to compatibly developed areas of the city to encourage infill development and redevelopment west of I-75." Somebody mentioned here that the, and it's been mentioned several times, that the, the net users are, is draining our income in the DRGR. But when Jim Beaver came here, he also talked about the eco-serve method, but that there is value to what service land does. And I think these two policies and that objective speak to the fact that, and the RAL study and four other studies speak to that there is recharge, we need a well field ordinance. I believe policy 1.7.1 outlines what the water task forces, you know, charge should be, that the supply and storage of water is a service that serves the rest of our city. We have done two real studies out there. One, the RAL report, we have concerning water, and that is what 1.7.1 says. Do the water. Do the water first, because that's what it says, and then look at the land uses. And I believe that was around the well field ordinances, because, and Ben, you were here, so you can speak to that. But watching from, as a residence's point of view, how that comprehensive plan was developed, and I was watching, not on TV, because we didn't have it back then, but that you have to amend your land use to protect the water. That's what it's saying there, is we have a place where we're going to get our water supply for future infill development in the city, and if we ruin it, we're not going to have infill development. We might get this development, but that's all we're going to get. Because like the East Coast, they have restricted their ability to develop and do infill development because their water supply is so parissally low. Water in the state of Florida is the biggest issue that's coming up to the state legislature this year. They're pumping money into, that's a good word, pumping money into protecting aquifers and well fields and springs protection. That's their big issue this year. And for us to go forward with accepting comp plan amendments when, one, we haven't even really determined what the land use should be, we don't have a well field protection ordinance that's sustainable for our future development west of I-75, we'll be shooting ourselves in the foot. So you can call it a moratorium, you can call it a, hold on, we're doing another study. We didn't have this kind of study that was done properly. Okay? And if we stick to our comp plan, and we can have infill development now, we'll still be able to develop west of I-75, there's plenty of land, there's plenty of approved things out in the DRGR already. I think this team of citizens, both for and against what's, you know, we're going to do today, can get the water right. We've already passed something, I think, two meetings ago that said we would, or, right, when we pass the water study task force, that we would fund, we would give them funding and the initiative to go and get those professionals that can help guide them to properly apply the statutory, you know, requirements that we want to create standards. We want to have clear, objective goals. We, you know, Sanibel has done this, Naples has done this. I don't want to be like Fort Myers, no offense to Fort Myers, great city. I don't want to be like Cape Coral, I don't want to be like Estero. I want to be like Benita Springs with the beautiful assets we have and protect them so for 100 years in the future, I can get that good drinking water and, you know, well, I won't be here, but those people who come after me like me will be able to enjoy what we're enjoying today. And Mayor, with that, I would also say that I appreciate what Dennis Gilkey has always participated and brought for his information, but I could not accept 4C. I just say we leave it as is and move forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak this time? Hey, how you doing?
Is there a motion, so we can have a second, create some discussion?
Would you, would you like to make a motion? I suppose that you're in favor of the moratorium?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good guess.
Yeah, would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to support what is on the agenda today.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Any discussion?
I'm ready.
Go ahead.
This, probably the final time I have to go through this, but hopefully, the, I've said before, this is not about conservation, and the thing I'm most irritated about on this whole process is the fact that we polarized our citizens even further. Yeah. You look up here at the council, and I look out in the crowd, and there's not a person in this room who doesn't have the heart to say, this is what I think's right for this city. But instead of, instead of taking the issue on, and maybe Mrs., maybe Ms. Greenstein said it the best, you know, it's up to us, it was up to us as a county, city council, to take this issue on, 14 years, multiple studies, and we haven't made a decision. And now we put it on the backs of seven people to bring forward a decision, and I don't know if this council's going to approve that. So at some point, we've got to step up to these council members and say, this is what we believe. I think Councilwoman Simons has a good grasp on what's going on. I believe everybody on this council's read all the, all the studies. Yet we put it off another year, we allow another year to go forward with fear of flooding in the east, with fear of development throughout the city that's not going to be planned. I don't think this city has ever done anything that wasn't with caution or with planning. I will not vote for the moratorium. It is the wrong thing to do, it's the wrong message to send to our citizens about the leadership this council is elected to take in the story.
Okay. Anyone else speak this time?
I'm going to go ahead and throw in here. First of all, I just want to talk about the process in general, not specifically to the DRGR. Strangely enough, maybe not so strangely enough, this isn't the first time this community has been polarized around a subject, and then people have been angry because some people voted one way and some people voted another way, some people were in favor of something and not. We've been through numerous things from whether or not we should allow benches to be put in the park, or something as drastically as important as the alignment of Imperial, which took us years, and people were not happy forever and ever about that, until now. It's a pretty nice road. So I want to tell you, I, you know, when people drag personalities in this, we're disappointed in you, oh my gosh. Each and every one of us as an individual, and as, and hopefully, a sentient, thinking human being, will look at data and come to a different conclusion. Every one of you has a right to do that. Everyone sitting up here has a right to do that. You have an obligation to do that. And you're going to become, because of your background, or because of what you see there, or what you, how you interpret the information, you're going to come to a different conclusion. That's okay. You should expect that. You should demand that. That kind of diversity of opinion is what makes us great. It doesn't make us weak. It doesn't mean that we're evil. It doesn't mean that we have ulterior motives. It means that we all think differently, and that's a good thing. Now, I know a lot of people are afraid of flooding and whatnot. You should be, because flooding is a part of, where did you move? Florida. All right? If you looked into it before you came here, we get wet every once in a while. It does happen. So I don't want anybody, I would never say to anybody that, boy, you know what, you're never going to have water in your ditch, you're never going to have water in your yard, it's never going to have 50-year, 20-year, 25-year flood. It's going to happen. So please, please, don't think that, you know, at the end of the day here, or the end of the year, or the end of the decade, end of 20 years, end of 50 years, your flooding worries are finally over in Benita Springs, because you live in a flowway. And I, I think you all know what that means. Water's going to come from the east, and it's going to come this way. So, towards the other point that's been made here, and I think this young gentleman right here, Jesse, you're right, spot on. I mean, I think that it really comes down to this, is that no one here is trying to suggest something bad for the community. The chamber is right to point out the things that it does. You're all right to point out the things that you have. But it's the process. We have to come up with a proper process. So please, don't think that it's anything else. Or if you're, you're entitled to think that I'm evil, and that I'm lying to everybody and everything like that, fine. If that's what you think, God bless you. But I got to tell you, it's not true. I don't believe that if anybody is, that's in this room, everybody's trying to do the best they can, and everybody wants the best for their community, just in a different way. I don't believe that the moratorium is the proper, the proper mechanism. It's just about process. I don't believe it's the proper mechanism. I think that you have at your hand the proper mechanism, which is your brain, that you have the ability, and you have in this place, the legislative ability, to weigh information. I think that when we shovel it down the road, and we decide, no, we're, we're not smart enough, or we don't have the information to make the decision, you can make that decision after all. And I, you know what, I, I know this is going to pass. I'm just letting you know. And as I told a group of people at the Romeo Club last night, I'm not trying to convince anybody. I'm just letting you know that that's how I think, that I think that the proper procedure, procedure for this would be for us to allow it to go, allow things to go through the process we have, and the process that we have, allow us to deny things that aren't good for the community, and allow us, I mean, and allow us to legally do that. I do have some worry that a moratorium kind of says that, you know what, you're, you're kind of shrugging off your legislative responsibilities. But you know what? Just my way of looking at it. And with that... And with that, whatever this outcome is, and I have a pretty good idea what it is, we're going to move on with this, and hopefully someday, we're going to come to a conclusion. That is my desire. We come to a conclusion on this. After 14 years, Martha's right, should have been done in 2004, it wasn't. Should have been done in 2006, it wasn't. Should have been done in 2008, it wasn't. On and on. Here we are again, in 2013, and we're going at it again, and it looks like it's not going to be till 2014, 2015. Will there be a decision then? Lord, I hope so. And again, I'm worried about the process, not the conclusion. Okay? Bill?
Thank you very much. Uh, since most of this activity would occur in District 6, uh, I have some views about it that are well thought out and are not, uh, and by the way, I do come from the private sector and understand how successful companies are, and thank God we have the private sector in our country, because they're the, the people that generate jobs and give people all the things they need to live on. Uh, I happen to think that the city, uh, is in an enviable position because of development. And most of the development that you may not know that's going on in East Benita right now is the number of unbilled homes that are going to occur, approximately 3,000, that have not come out of the, the ground. In addition to that, adding that to the population of the five gated communities that are in East Benita, at build-out, there will be over 7,000 residential housing units, which will add to the coffers by way of taxes, et cetera, over the years. In addition to that, I lived here before Benita Beach Road was widened east of I-75, it was a two-lane road. So there has been tremendous progress, we now have four lanes out there. However, what I've noticed in this particular Christmas season, the traffic that's coming from East Benita, uh, going west, north and south, depending when you get to I-75, is dramatic. Um, I don't know if any, all of you were here in 2006 when, uh, 41 was backed up, Benita Beach Road was backed up because they hadn't widened 41 to three lanes. So I've seen tremendous growth. We have a tremendous opportunity, and the infill that's occurring in the residential areas, including Quail West, which is on Benita Grande Road, some of those houses that they're building are in, are going to be in Lee County. Uh, the, uh, the Village Walk, which isn't even completed yet, they were, thought they were going to be done by December 31st, they're going to be, have 1,600 houses that build out probably in the first quarter of, uh, 2014. The, uh, the people that have contacted me in reference to it, far, uh, the, the emails that I've received and the telephone call, the people want to do things in a systematic way and to, the studies, I've, I've, I've lived all through the studies, Mr. RALL's study and all the other people. We have so much infill that's occurring residentially on, on Imperial Parkway. We have eight communities building right now. Now, coming to the DRGR land is different. I believe the mine will be operating until 2017, uh, something like that. I think that's where the, is it 18? Okay. Well, uh, the, I was out there, uh, last week with Turi Polonica, and I walked on Tower Lane, I was on foot with her, and what's interesting out there, that every piece of property that has been developed, be it a farm, be it a church, be it a residential house, everything is elevated. Burmed. And the reason why they're all burned, because they don't want the floodwater to come in. But I'm more about, the flooding is one thing, but the other part of it is the situation that the city is in. I believe that the moratorium should be put in place, but I'm more concerned with the number of houses, the number of cars, and we don't have the adequate road, uh, roadways to take care of that, we don't have any real solid ground in terms of dollars that would be required by the city to maintain all those new, new widening of roads, and then, we also have the people that are on the beach that live there, most of the people on the beach, from what I know, they're not for increased, more people all the time, they really aren't. And I bet, I, I'd be willing to bet if you put it to a vote, they would say, "We need to take, do the infill first and take, get, get East Benita finished." And by the way, Logan Boulevard is coming up from, from Immaculate Road in 2017, which is going to drop more traffic on the Benita Beach Road, which will, and of course, the commercial development that's going to happen on all the four corners at I-75, that hasn't happened yet either because of the recession. So we have tremendous potential, we have a great group of people up here, we have different points of view, but I'm interested in the total city and the people that live here that are here now, and yes, there could be development in the DRGR at some point in time of some amount, I have no idea what that is, but shouldn't we do the things that the most people want in the city? Because most of the people that I've contacted meet definitely do not want to rush to do something of this magnitude at this time. Okay, thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much. Yes, Steve.
Yeah, I want to just, uh, thank the gentleman in the front row over there for his, uh, presentation. Uh, I do agree with you in terms of the Water Task Force, that I don't want it to go beyond 12 months, and I think, given that, the, uh, the makeup of that task force, I think it's going to be, uh, done ahead of time. But I wouldn't want it to go over 12 months. And by the way, John, I remember Bill, the last meeting, asked if it was going to be televised, is, is that going to, is that true?
The first organizational meeting will not be televised, but that's, we have indicated to the group that is, that's the ultimate plan, so we're making arrangements for the future meetings. And the first meeting, by the way, the organizational meeting, is January the 13th.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Anyone else this time? We have a motion, a second. Audrey.
I just, uh, two things, housekeeping, really. Um, one is, the ordinance shows underlined and strike-throughs, I will make a clean copy when it's, you know, time, because it's not an amending ordinance, but I just wanted you to see the changes from the last hearing. Uh, the second thing is just, uh, to point out to Councilmember Simons, as far as, uh, the Water Strategy Task Force, it's actually the city manager who would be obtaining the studies, it's not the water.
Yes.
It would be, okay, it's just so that it was very clear.
Yes, ma'am, but I, I just wanted to say that we did pass something that would allow him to.
Right.
Order up the engineers or whoever we need.
And that's in Resolution 13078, so I just wanted to make sure that everything stays consistent.
I want to be sure, though, that, I mean, I'm sure Carl will do this, that before he starts ordering up studies, that he comes back to us and, and allows city council to say, "Look, this is what they're asking for, here's what it's going to cost, are you sure you want to do this?"
And that is what the resolution also says.
It says, "The city manager shall receive council's authorization to appropriate and expend such funds after presentation of estimates to receive such services."
Okay.
Funds will not be expended prior to such authorization.
Okay. Now, back to the moratorium. Anything else?
Um, no, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Nope.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
No.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longcar.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes, and, uh, Audrey, what do you got for us next?
One second.
Mayor. Mayor? Uh, before we ask Audrey to move on to the next, I just want to say that this is not bad news for Benita Springs, and Benita Springs is in business. Uh, we have lots of beautiful things going on in the city, and, uh, we do have people building beautiful homes and businesses.
Okay.
Just for the record.
Uh, we're going to go ahead and take, uh.
Five minutes.
Yeah, we're going to take, uh, 10 minutes. 10 minutes, be, please, be back in your seats at 11:50.
Okay.